Okay, we've come to our item fifteen, which is the Artisan Markets Petition. And specifically, it is a request or it's a presentation, discussion, and possible action regarding the Artisan Markets Special Events Permit, one oh nine S.C. twenty fifteen, based on a petition from the Scottsdale Gallery Association. We have Mr. Brent Stockwell here, Assistant City Manager, to speak toward it and present on this. But before you get started, Mr. Stockwell, let me just say that we've got a number of cards here that will want to speak to that, and I will talk toward that a little bit in a minute when that comes up. But I just want to remind everyone, this is specifically on the petition. This is on that and that alone. So I'm going to ask that everybody comply with that item and that item alone. We've got other things certainly to discuss that we know that are associated, but right now, the agenda item is the petition, denial or to accept. Or to accept, I should say, maybe the request or suggestion to rescind it. With that, Mr. Stockwell.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. As you just mentioned, this item is a petition request to rescind the special event permit issued to Artisan Markets, which is held on Thursdays and Sundays at the Scottsdale Waterfront. The petition and a supporting petition that were received are included in the attachments to your report. It's clear to me that a lot of information has been shared with the City Council over the past few months on this, and so I just want to add a few points from a staff perspective on this issue. This is the first time that we're aware of that the City Council has ever heard a request to revoke a permit that has been issued by staff, so we're covering new ground here. We're also not aware of any event that has evoked such a strong and united response from the downtown business community, and we understand and empathize with the concerns that have been raised. We have listened to and reviewed all the concerns, and we do strongly desire a resolution to this issue so that we can continue to work with gallery owners and downtown merchants to create an environment so that businesses can be as successful as possible, so that we can have a fair and clear process for all people proposing events in Scottsdale, and so that we can host successful events that activate downtown for residents and visitors to Scottsdale and are supported by downtown merchants and hoteliers alike. This is one of more than two-hundred-and-fifty special events approved in a given year, yet this one event seems to have attracted more attention and input than all of the others combined. Why? Because this is a unique activity. It's a recurring weekly event rather than an event of relatively short duration. It's an event that's held simultaneously on city, federal, and private property, and it's an event that includes as a major component direct sales of arts and crafts, which is also a major category of retail sales in downtown Scottsdale. And it's an event where there's been strong oppositions from existing merchants throughout downtown. So, unique, first time this has happened, and unique circumstances around this. For context, the Artisan Markets location is shown on this map. Let me give you a little bit of context on this location. So at the time of construction of improvements in this area, so the council approved the construction of improvements in this area in two thousand and three, the area was specifically designed for special events such as art shows and farmers markets. That's in quotes because that's from the direct report. The bridge was designed for vendor tents and has outlets and area lights to provide electricity for these activities. The project was designed to link the business districts and parking garages north and south of the canal. It was designed to be a civic space and a public amenity. It is possible that the council's direction today is different than the council's direction a dozen years ago, and at the work study you gave us direction to come back with possibilities on how this area might be used in the future. This is a close-up that shows a location of the market for the Sunday event. It takes place along the south side of the canal, across the Marshall Way Bridge, and along both approaches to the bridge. The Thursday night event does not extend along the south side of the canal, so that long outreach piece that you see there heading up to the northeast along the south end of the canal is not included on Thursday night. This slide refers to maps containing the report. The special event location is cited on city, federal, and private land. The green indicates private land held at the waterfront, so you see a portion of the event there. The blue shows land owned by the City of Scottsdale, and the remainder of the Artisan Market event area without shading is area that is owned by the federal government, and that land is managed by Salt River Project. And yes, those are areas that the city has made improvements, and those are areas that would be considered city right-of-way. So, city right-of-way crosses federal government property a number of places throughout Scottsdale, where it crosses over the C.A.P. Canal or the, you know, area where Westworld is, where, you know, even just east of this, where Scottsdale Road crosses the canal and the canal goes underneath it. So that's a fairly common situation for city right-of-way to be on federal government property. But, that's what makes this area unique and important to downtown Scottsdale. So I'm going to pause in this slide for just one moment, and I know that nearly all of us, or perhaps all of us, have been really familiar with the application and special events processes, but I want to quickly review this. The purpose of the special events ordinance and specifically the special events committee function is to, and this is straight from the ordinance, promote special events, protect neighborhoods, protect public health, safety, and welfare, and ensure safe traffic control, public sanitation, and emergency care. The special event committee is an administrative body made up of city staff with expertise in the areas needed to review special events application, and it's a committee that is created by ordinance. It was created by the City Council at the time the ordinance was approved. This is similar to other application and permit review processes that staff conducts. Other types of applications, other than special event applications, are reviewed by staff members or a group of staff members that individually have specialization in one area or another. This is a common staff responsibility that has been delegated by the City Council to staff. The Artisan Market application followed the special event review procedure. The application was received, concerns were identified and discussed, and when the application was deemed complete for review by the committee, each staff member reviewed it, and at the committee member, they discussed the application content and made a decision. Early on, concerns were expressed, and those were discussed with those who made the concerns, other merchants, the applicant, and staff. It was clear to the committee at the time of the review and approval that not all the concerns could be addressed, so the committee, under the ordinance, had to make a decision. In short, they felt that they were not grounds under the current ordinance to deny the permit. They were also aware of concerns regarding the event voiced previously in two thousand and twelve and two thousand and fourteen. From the perspective of the committee, each time the applicant was asked to work with merchants and to mitigate concerns. The committee was also aware that the ordinance review process was underway and thought that that might be the most appropriate way to address the concerns. And following that decision, the decision was forwarded to all of the interested parties. You received an email immediately following that. We also forwarded it to others as well. In your staff report, included as attachment too is the Artisan Market application as it was reviewed by the special event committee in August. It was intentionally provided in that format, okay? So that you would exactly see the information that was reviewed by the committee at the time it was approved, because that in part is what you're asking to weigh in on right now, is, you know, was the application, did they make an incorrect decision in approving that application? In addition, included in your packet are the stipulations that were included when the permit was issued. So those were also included, so you could see the information that was put by staff as stipulations on this issue. So this slide shows the petition request, and the council report provides context and discusses each petition element. I'm just going to go quickly over each one of these. I know you've had an opportunity to review all the material, but I just want to make a few quick summary points that were provided in that report. The first one, direct the special events committee to immediately rescind the permit issued to Artisan Markets on the canal bank. Staff's analysis is that the council cannot direct the committee to revoke or rescind the permit, but can ask the city manager to look into the validity of the particular permit, but it cannot revoke the permit directly, and it cannot direct staff to revoke it. Second, number one on this now, lack of authority to grant permits on public property. Staff's analysis is that the authority exists to grant permits on public property through other sections of the city code, such as Scottsdale Revise Code forty-seven dash forty-one, which states that special events in the right-of-way are subject to the requirements of the zoning ordinance. Number two, that the permit fee constitutes a prohibited gift. Staff's analysis is this: The granting of the permit does not constitute a gift under charter or state law for a number of reasons, including that the fees charged were per the approved fee schedule, that there were no other fees authorized by the City Council for the use of this area. If additional fees are proposed, they require sixty days' notice under the law, under state law. It's agreed that there is a policy question here of whether the city wants to continue to allow this type of event at this location for this duration, but is staff's analysis that the city did take into account the factors available and appropriate for determining charging structure. And since council gave direction on September twenty-first to start working on a new fee schedule, that work is already underway to come back to the council for approval as quickly as possible. Third point, negative impacts of the permit violates special events policy. Although it's recognized that businesses have said that the event negatively impacts them due to a decrease in customer sales and available parking, this did not appear, does not appear to be a condition for which the committee can verify to deny approval or revoke the permit under the current ordinance. In addition, while the petition is directed to this one permit, the decision on each of these petition items affects significant numbers of other events, but the impact on those other events is not being considered at this point as part of this item. So that's another thing that we wanted to mention to you as well. Here's the revocation criteria. The zoning ordinance contains criteria for deciding whether to revoke a special events permit. These are, first, failure to conduct the event as presented on the application. The first event date is until Thursday, October eighth. None of the event dates have occurred, so that criteria can't be applied at this point. Second, failure to comply with special conditions and approval. Because the event is not taking place, no conditions have been violated, so it's the second point there. And the third one is this: If the event poses a threat to public health, safety, or welfare. At the time the application was considered, there was no evidence that the event poses a threat to public health, safety, or welfare, as those terms are defined and commonly understood. The community's petition and conversations and email from the community have expressed concerns about the Artisan Market event. We understand that, but from a staff perspective, those concerns appear to be beyond the criteria for revocation. However, we understand that the City Council may have additional feedback for the special events committee to consider after review of all of the input that was considered, so everything that has been considered since the time the application was considered, approved. And because the special events ordinance is being reviewed, the approach recommended by staff has been to consider addressing concerns through the ordinance update. And that really gets to, you know, a major, major point here. And I know this is a concern that a lot of people have addressed to me, and I've talked to a lot of people about this. And staff is really trying to weigh two things. We're trying to weigh our support of existing businesses into downtown with the rules and the procedures that the council have given staff to follow, to make sure that we follow those consistently and appropriately in each case. And in this, in this case, that, that's where we've gotten to that dilemma. And our advice, our recommendation is, anytime when you have a conflict on something like that, when you want the people that are applying for permits to be subject to different criteria, you change those rules. So you go through the process to change those rules and then have them apply, rather than going through a process where either staff, you know, primarily this, is staff is being asked to use considerable administrative discretion in what can be considered in approving or denying a application or a permit. So that's, that's why we're coming to the conclusion that we feel that the ordinance needs to be changed, the fee schedule needs to be changed in order for this type of event to be denied, or this type of event to be subject to increased fees for use of public and other property. So, finally, last slide, some options for you to consider, standard part of any report that staff makes to City Council. The first one is this: Ask the city manager to review the permit. What does that mean? So what that means is that the acting city manager will ask the special events committee to review this permit again, given the additional information that has been received since the permit was initially approved in August, and take into consideration such things as the City Council may not, may tonight ask to be taken into consideration. Here are some things that might be taken into consideration based on what we've heard. One, the opposition from nearby merchants and property owners to the event. Number two, a desire to keep the bridge open at all times for trolleys and for court carriages. Third, the negative impact on limited parking in the area. Fourth possibility, a desire to eliminate the use of city-owned property for this event. Or another possibility is to limit the duration and timing of the event due to impacts on art walk. If this is the council's direction, then it'll be scheduled for the next available special events committee, which is scheduled for Wednesday, October sixteenth, and a decision on whether to revoke the permit will be made at that meeting. The second option is to ask the city manager to use the special events ordinance revision process to address concerns. What does that mean? What that means is that the acting city manager will take direction from this meeting along with the direction provided at the special events work study, and draft language and fee schedules for public input and for City Council approval to address these concerns, but that would allow the permit to go forward as approved. And the third option is to take no action, further action on the petition. That's always an option. That's really a default option we include in any council report, and there may be other options that the council may wish to consider as well. So the whole purpose of this presentation was just to identify a few things from staff perspective, and we wanted to lay these options out for you for discussion purposes.
Thank you, Mr. Stockwell. We'll go right to some of the public comments, requests to speak. We have some twenty-six cards in total, and what I'm going to ask is that we, individual cards will assign two minutes to address the issue. We do have several instances where some of these have been combined. I haven't seen total, oh, they do have an indication of donated time from others, and I'll announce who that is and assign some additional time depending upon the number of cards that are associated with it. I would just remind you again, and I understand even from the presentation, that even in some of the responses that may be available to us, there still is the issue at hand as to whether or not rescinding this is consistent with the law. Only comment that I would concern is I think consistent and equal application of law is paramount in this, and so making exceptions is a, is a, is a tough path to take. So with requests to speak, though, I'd start with Andrea Zaksheskey.
My name is Andrea Zaksheskey. I am co-owner of Gallery Andrea on Main Street. I just, I'll keep it very brief, but I just want to say I am against the tent show. I believe that it takes away from our art walk, which has been a tradition for over thirty years. And I think it's important that we support our galleries and we listen to their voice and what they think is important to keep the galleries alive and well, because we are a tourist attraction. We, as gallery owners, bring in a ton of money, tax dollar-wise. We are a reason why people come to Scottsdale. They come to Scottsdale to the Arts District. Are they coming to Scottsdale for the tent show? I don't think so. Nothing against the tent show, but I think it really distracts from the art galleries and art walk, and I believe that we should keep that energy alive and keep the galleries alive. You know, you look and see there's, there's actually quite a few vacant spaces in Old Town. If we want to see that continue, then maybe, if you let the tent show continue, you may see more galleries start to drop out. Do we want that? That's the question. Do we want to authorize this? So, I'm against it, as well as my co-owner, the other Andrea of Gallery Andrea. So, you know, the shop owners have a high overhead. You know, that's the other thing, you know, I don't believe these tent shows have the overhead that we have. So, right? And so that's an important point as well. So I'm not going to take a lot more time. I'm just going to say that we should try to do events that help support the Arts District, not take away. If we did the tent show in collaboration with art walk, that would make sense for a Thursday night art walk.
I understand.
That's all I have to say, unless, yeah.
No, no, that's, the time has expired.
I'm done. Okay, thank you.
Next is Audrey Thacker.
Good evening, Mayor Lane and members of council. The Artisan Market is a splendid visual street fair that draws vibrant activity to downtown Scottsdale, adding to the love of place unique to the waterfront area. When you support local small business, you help build community, and that is what we are all about. Artisan Markets has been a staple in Scottsdale for the past five years, and every year the city has issued our permit. Every rule, stipulation, and process that is currently in place has been followed. We have not manipulated any system, nor do we ask for any type of special treatment, as has been mentioned. Artisan Markets is utilizing the area for its intended purpose, as stated in the council report. Over the years, my team and I have, in good faith, reached out to the area business community to create a collaborative environment. This has been met with much resistance. As a business community, it's important to regularly collaborate and provide a sense of inclusion. If there is a problem, let's find a solution. The gallery and shop owners are great business people who have built successful and important businesses here in Scottsdale. Successful communities work together, and each of us have contributed to the vitality of the area. We would not be here today if the market was not popular and successful. As I've mentioned before, Artisan Markets will pay all reasonable fees under the much talked-about new special event ordinance. I strongly believe that Artisan Markets, art walk, and all of the merchants can coexist to enjoy mutual success. We are all working on businesses we are passionate about and bring joy to the people we serve. This is America, and free enterprise is our right and the foundation for economic vitality. There is plenty for everyone. If a vote to rescind occurs, this restraint of trade will undoubtedly put myself and several others out of business. I trust that whatever decision is made here today will be based on facts and will be made with the best interest of Scottsdale in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thacker. Next is Bobby Har.
I want to take a position that we haven't heard, a way to benefit all concerned. Artisan Market is successful at making the waterfront a place where people want to be. Why not incorporate that success to benefit all and with all of the marketing efforts? One collaborative idea we proposed is to take the trolley on Thursday night and to repurpose it and make it the Scottsdale, I don't know if this is going to come up or not, the Scottsdale Art Walk Trolley, insofar from my rendering. This would be something that would take the traffic that is at the Artisan Market through Fifth Avenue, Marshall Way, to the galleries and back, therefore benefiting everyone. You're not taking an either-or position. And, how about this, if we do a ribbon-cutting, we invite the press, and we make this a big, this is what Scottsdale is doing for the art.
Mr. Har, I don't want to take away from your time, but this is regarding the rescinding or not of the-
That's what I'm getting to, sir.
Well, yeah, but the other plans and that, and there's limited time, but we'll, we'll hold it at that point, but I just want to make sure we stay on topic.
Okay. So what I'm saying is that there's no reason to rescind the profit, the permit, because there's a way to make it work for all. That's all I'm suggesting, is make it work for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Har. Next is Brian Moore.
Good evening, Mayor Lane, City Council. My name is Brian Moore. My wife and I, Beverly, own Beverly Moore Studio and Gallery on Fifth Avenue. We are also Scottsdale residents and current paid members of the Fifth Avenue Merchants Association. I could talk about a multitude of relevant issues in regard to the Artisan Market and its negative impact. However, I will focus on only one issue: The false and misleading information submitted on the permit application for the Artisan Market. I have some documentation here. I don't know if that's legible enough. As my time is quite limited, allow me to immediately direct your attention to the list of current paid members of the Fifth Avenue Area Merchants Association. This information was provided to me by the treasurer of the Merchants Association yesterday. Those highlighted in blue are current paid members. They total seventeen. Of those seventeen, seven marked with the asterisks sign the September twenty-first petition against Artisan Markets, which equates to forty-one percent of the current paid members of the Merchants Association being vehemently against this so-called special event. Of the non-paid members totaling twelve, the four marked with the check marks also signed the petition against Artisan Markets. The most noticeable piece of information that I can provide is the special event permit neighborhood input form submitted and signed by Scott Yanni, the president of the Merchants Association. It states that there are no concerns in regard to Artisan Market. This matter was never on a Merchants Association meeting agenda, nor was it vetted with any of the members, other than, of course, Ms. Thacker, who is the vice president of the Merchants Association. I have an email sent from Audrey, excuse me, to Audrey from Scott. Please note the email, saying that she has, that she has full support of the Merchants Association. I have not been able to find a discussion or a vote on this matter in any of the Merchants Association minutes. Artisan Markets two thousand and fifteen approved permit should be immediately rescinded due to the total misrepresentation. The Merchants Association on this input form, we as members of the Merchants Association are totally appalled with this yet again self-serving circumstance. You know, it's come to light as a very disturbing issue.
Mr. Moore, if you would, please wrap up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I will wrap it up with that. All I can say is, you know, we have a great city here. We have a great opportunity. I understand we have many people here that have different opinions and, you know, different opinions on this subject. I would just ask that we find, you know, a solution to this, and given the evidence I just presented, that the permit be rescinded. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Next is Shira Shines.
Good evening, councilmen.
If you would identify yourself, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Shira. Last name is Schnier, S.H.N.I.E.R. Did I write clearly enough? I'm the operator of Zulikens. Zulikens is a brick-and-mortar children's store right on Fifth Avenue. We have noticed over the last couple of years a significant drop in Sunday sales, mostly because of parking. But as we look at the situation, we realize, much as has just been stated, nobody's approached us, nobody's asked us if we're in agreement with this type of a thing, and we can't quite understand or wrap our head around the fact that all of these vendors are out there as a special event. It's not special when it's every single weekend. It's taken a monopoly. Nobody else can do a special event out there on a Sunday during high season. There's nothing available. It's been booked right up to the end of the season. We live for the season. All of the brick-and-mortar in this area live for our walk-by. I have destination traffic. I've worked very hard to market to them, only to get phone calls in my store on Sundays saying, "Shira, we're circling and circling, and the kids are crying, and I got to get going. We can't find parking. Never mind, we're just going to order it from Amazon, but thanks." So, I've done all I can, and I do have my destination market people. They come specifically for me. They can't get to me. And yet, what is operating are people that are paying nothing. They're paying absolutely next to nothing, time after time. We have to stay open all year round. We can't have the luxury of closing when it's very hot and nobody's coming. We don't have the luxury of saying, "I can close the doors, turn off the electricity, not worry about paying staff, and I can make hay when the sun is shining," and then not worry about it for the rest of the year. We are absolutely inundated with people who even walk into my store and show me the cute little thing they bought at the flea market up there. And it will be hair barrettes and tutus and all the cute stuff that I sell. And all I can think about is, "Well, there's twenty dollars you're not spending in my store." So this is a special event that isn't special. It isn't an event. It is pop-up retail for profit, and it is subsidized by different levels of government. I can't imagine the restaurants would want subsidized food tables and restaurant-type settings and menus and wine and whatever in front of their restaurants.
Sure. Ms. Shira, you're out of time, Shira, and so please, if you could, wrap it up.
Thank you.
Next would be Sima Verzino.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, councilpeople. I am Sima Verzino. I own Marcelino Ristorante on Stetson Drive with my husband, Chef Marcelino. I have frequented the market, and I have seen- I have frequented the market, and I have seen beautiful people selling beautiful things up there. However, it gets to a point in season, as we've just spoken, we have a very difficult problem with parking. We are very successful, and I'm very grateful, and therefore, we pay a lot of taxes, and I pay a lot of HOA CAM charges as well, to keep that area very clean. But the problem is the parking. And if this market is there twice a week—which it is not a special event—maybe we can work to find a solution where we can still enhance the area with beautiful artists that are creating beautiful things, but make a special event, perhaps not twice a week, where it's taking away money from the brick-and-mortar businesses and creating parking problems that we get calls that people are renouncing their reservation in my restaurant, and I am losing money in season because people can't park. So, bringing something, an event, to the bridge—which we do have special events, and we deal with that throughout the year, and that's fine. But twice a week in season is really creating very difficult problems on parking, and I wish there would be a solution so that we can keep the artists going and everybody happy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Verzino. Next is some cards with donated time, and the next one would be French Thompson, donated time from Trey Bezzwell—Bezzwin? And someone else.
Somebody else? I kind of like that.
So, I'll—
That's all right.
Go for four minutes on this, if you would.
My name's French Thompson. I'm the owner of French Designer Jeweler in Scottsdale, Arizona. I'm also a board member of the Scottsdale Gallery Association. When we started talking to the city about this, in, I think, July, something like that, we had no idea this was all going to happen. This has gotten really out of hand because the city didn't listen to us. City didn't listen to us before, didn't listen to us now. I just want you guys all to just think about the number 300. I think there was a movie, The 300, something like that. Three hundred different businesses have come to the city and asked the city, "Please do not issue this permit." I'm not going to say the city council issued the permit, but I will say staff did. The staff was aware that there'd been—so many people say, "Please do not issue this permit," and it was issued again. Again, this year, we asked that they do not issue this permit. This has actually brought more businesses together now than we've ever had before. There's three hundred businesses that have come to you and say, "Please do not issue this event." It's not an event. It's a small business. It is directly in competition with the businesses around it. If you're selling art, you're selling art. If you're selling other retail product, you're selling other retail product. There are towns around here that Audrey would be able to take it to and would do really well. This really isn't personal, because honestly, to all of the artisans that are showing there, if you went to another city, you're not competing with those things, but the people here you're competing with, you're hurting them. And we are now paying attention to our businesses. We're paying attention to what's going on. You know, some of the writing that has come from the Artisans Market says, "Well, pay attention to your own business." That's exactly what we're doing. We're paying attention to our business. We're also paying attention to the whole downtown. We are watching out for the downtown. That's also what we are asking you to do. It boggles my mind that one event is being consistently promoted over all of the businesses in downtown. One business takes precedence over three hundred businesses. I know we live in a democracy. I mean, we live in a democracy. Ask the citizens of Scottsdale, we live in a democracy. I don't even understand how three hundred against one isn't like—the math is there. It's a democracy. We voted that this is not good for us. If you want proof that this is harmful, there's three hundred businesses that tell you this is harmful. Yes, it's very difficult to prove that there's monetary loss and parking spaces and all that, but until you go in and get a CAT scan, you can't really prove you got stomach cancer either. So if you want to spend a lot of money to try to do studies and just wait for another year and let it happen some more, go get some studies and maybe approve it, but Scottsdale's got a cancer, and it's going to hurt to take it out. And I'll tell you what, it's going to hurt. You've never had any cancer removed that didn't hurt the patient somehow. This is hurting Scottsdale. It's dividing Scottsdale. There's newspaper articles out about this now, many publications. There's a television thing going on right now on Channel 15 about this. I mean, this is going to get national news, and the city council can make this and fix this. So rescinding this thing, if it has an effect on future events—if they're the same kind of events as this—I'd say good riddance to them. And I want to thank you for your time. Hope I wasn't too passionate.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Next is Bob Pageman, and he has some donated time from Teresa Lewis and Beverly Moore. Bob, we'll do the four minutes.
Mayor Lane and members of council, I'm Bob Pageman. I own Pageman Gallery. It's in downtown Scottsdale. And I want to tell you something. Artisan Markets is a very popular event. In fact, it's so popular that in the past four years, it's had six major complaints and petitions against it. I have it on the screen. Let's go over the complaints. June 2012, eighty-five merchants complained about the show. They claimed business damage, monetary damage. The city looked at it. They issued the permit. March 2014, thirty-three merchants complained. Again, the same thing: monetary damage, business damage. The city looked at it, issued the permit. Fast forward to July of 2015, the galleries start to complain. And part of the complaint was that the owner of the show—or the president of the show—is going to the concierge and basically telling him to come down there after or before Art Walk, but they start to compete. And the SGA offered a formal petition—or actually, an official opposition letter—to the city to stop the show. There was a big meeting at Calvin Charles with forty people stating the case. What happened? The city issued the permit. After that, we went around and collected two hundred-plus signatures from local merchants and other people, property owners. That petition wasn't only about Artisan Markets, but they had three tenants that applied to them. One of them was exclusivity for Art Walk, meaning that no Artisan Market on Thursdays. The second one was a non-compete situation, where any art event cannot have adverse effect on local businesses. And the third one was to limit the number of the art shows tremendously that were applied to them. Following that, there was a petition delivered by the SGA, representing twenty-eight galleries, to rescind the show. And even after that, most recently, there was a petition by about thirty-six South Bridge and Stetson Drive merchants. The petition was basically that Artisan Market was harmful to their business, and I got to point out that they are at the base of the bridge. It's not like far away, like the city claims, "Hey, the galleries on Main Street can't be affected by them." They're at the foot of the bridge, and they're crying that this is harmful to them. This is harmful to the business. So you have—I don't know if it's three hundred exactly, but you have two hundred-plus merchants. And I delivered a spreadsheet to you, Mayor Lane, this morning, that shows that there's a cumulative number of two hundred-plus merchants that are affected. So what are you going to do about this? You're still going to permit it, knowing what you know? Now, I'm going to point you to two separate options here. The permit for the October through December of this year has been issued. Knowing what you know now—maybe you didn't know it before, but what you know now—rescind it. But the 2016 permit has not been issued. You have a very simple choice: don't grant it. Just instruct the staff not to grant it, knowing what you know now. And look, you know, these are people—that are merchants, that are the backbone of Scottsdale. They constitute downtown Scottsdale, the merchants. And you're going to throw them all under the bus for what? One event producer? Your choice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Page. Next is John Binkley, and he has some donated time from Terry Binkley and Charlie Bink. Have four minutes, if that's all right.
Good evening, council. My name is John Binkley. I'm sixty-four years old. I am from the School of Hard Knocks, and I'm here representing the Artisan Markets. My family created a tabletop board game called Trekking the National Park several years ago. We market this product primarily through venues like the Artisan Markets. And when I got a hold of the petition to rescind, I had to really stop to think, "What the heck is this all about?" I mean, here we are, made in America product, we're trying to do our best to market the product. We do it primarily through venues like the Artisan Market. And so I'm reading this thing, and I'm thinking, "Well, does the city really—does the special event committee really have the authority?" I think that's been answered. The granting of the permit for $159 is really not a gift. It's what which Audrey had followed through with on the permit process. The real big issue here was, does the permit negatively impact surrounding businesses? And I had to really stop to think, "How does our tabletop board game negatively impact anybody in the local community?" But in all fairness to those who signed the petition, I decided to see things from their perspective, so I went downtown. I went downtown last Thursday to do the Art Walk. I wanted to observe the parking situation. I wanted to look at the product offering. I wanted to, you know, to see the flow of foot traffic down Main Street and Marshall, and try to understand how a special event vendor like myself could pose a threat to anybody in this community. So as I walked the galleries, I had to wonder, you know, "When was the last time you folks on city council actually walked the Art Walk or participated in the Artisan Market events? Seems like a fair question to ask, since tonight you folks will be voting on this issue." Well, here's what I discovered. In terms of parking, I got to Scottsdale and Main Street at about six o'clock that evening. And I walked down Main Street, and, yeah, parking was a problem. Now, this is an artist—the Artisan Market wasn't going on. There was no special events on the bridge that evening. And parking along Marshall was really, really difficult as well. There's no question about that. But I got to—I don't know if this—does this work here? When I got to the bridge, and I had this map in hand, I noticed that there were five parking spots, public parking spaces, adjacent to the bridge. So I went in, took a look at the parking, to see what it was like. And I noticed that there was plenty of parking in the five public parking spaces. Now, there wasn't an event that night, but there was a lot of spaces available. In terms of the product, I wanted to see what the product was. The galleries offer incredibly beautiful stuff. I mean, this is museum-quality goods. You know, I mean, but really, it's vastly different than those goods that we do at the art market. I mean, it differs in quality, style, price, et cetera. It's two different product categories, it's two different customers, it's two different business models. In terms of people, when I was observing people, the Artisan Market—I mean, on the bridge, where the Artisan Market normally is held on that Thursday night, when there was no market, there was nobody on it. I was the only one on the bridge. But what really surprised me, when I got to Main Street to walk the Art Walk, how few people there really were walking down the aisles. Now, this is not when the market was going on. And I'm thinking, huh, you know, has the Art Walk really lost its luster? There wasn't that many people compared to the vibrancy that the Artisan Markets brings to the table. But one of the things that I've read in the issues is about the—the people have claimed that we've stole their customers. I've been in business long enough to realize that if you own a customer, nobody can steal them from you. But the customer—the customer can't be had by anybody. The customer really is free to roam the markets as they see fit, whether that's to walk the Art Walk, whether that's to walk the bridge, or do whatever they want. You know, it's obvious from the letters and the emails that I've read that the petitioners and supporters have very strong feelings about this, you know, those of us who participate. I mean, we've been referred to some really nasty things: parasites, predators, poachers. But, you know, the feelings really don't matter to me. It's really what I've been searching for, is the facts that prove that we're causing a negative impact. What does that mean? What does negative impact mean? Besides your feelings, where's the hard data that says that I, a game producer, is creating a negative impact on your business? You know, one of the emails that I read says, "You know, I'm not sure how we prove the negative impact, except to show our sales figures." Okay.
Mr. Binkle, if you could, please wrap it up.
Wrap it up here. Conclusion: Vote based on facts, not emotionally charged feelings. Let's update the special events ordinance. And why don't we work together, not in opposition, to create a vibrant downtown experience for visitors and locals alike? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Binkle. That concludes the public testimony on this topic. So we have the question at hand on whether or not to rescind or to rescind. We'll start with Vice Mayor Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, there's a lot of places to start on this. We're dealing with a problem that has come to council, and it probably should never have come to council. It shouldn't have ever risen to this point. Some of the speakers talked about how there have been plaintiff arguments from various affected parties in 2012, and they were ignored; 2014, and ignored again; and 2015, this year. Three hundred people say they're being adversely impacted by this event. And one of the principal charges in the city code, in the city ordinance that governs this event, is that we will be mindful of and careful of and guarding of the public's health, welfare, and safety. I think—and the comment was made in the staff presentation—that there is no evidence that the welfare has been impacted, as that term is commonly defined and well-understood. Well, I got to tell you, staff, it's not well-understood by me what you're defining it to be. I even took the liberty of, this past week, going and looking up what many people may do, look up in Oxford Dictionary, or Thesaurus, or whatever. What is meant by the word "welfare"? And it absolutely covers economic welfare, as well as issues like health. We should have been listening to what are the welfare impacts on the business community known as the arts and culture center of the city. I made the comment several weeks ago when we talked about this, that the importance of this is, from my mind, this is something that the citizens have expressed a desire, that this city be known for its arts and culture, presence, reputation, presentation, and product offerings. And I don't think you can—I don't think you can put another event hyped on the most expensive piece of real estate in the city at the lowest imaginable cost for the longest period of time, with free electricity and whatever else, on the event nights that have been developed as the event night of the arts community. I don't think you can do that and have them consume parking and have them consume traffic, foot traffic or otherwise. I can't imagine that you could think that this is not in some way affecting the welfare of the arts community. But, you know, this has grown much bigger than just the arts community. We don't have three hundred arts galleries here in the city, but we have three hundred businesses, which are folks that are paying rent and paying overhead and paying employees and paying taxes. Three hundred different businesses are saying, "Our welfare has been adversely impacted." And I think the responsibility of staff, frankly, was to listen to these voices sometimes over the year. And apparently, they did listen in 2013, because they passed an ordinance specifically allowing special events to be happening on city right-of-way. One can only wonder by what authority we did this before someone thought to pass an ordinance allowing it. We've all started with 2013 and said, "There's an ordinance now in place that says that private businesses can have public events, special events..." private businesses can have public events, special events they're called, on public right-of-way. And how did we do this? We said by referring back to the special events ordinance in the city, which is, which is oddly beyond description because the special ordinance in the city says it is specifically not for public property. So I don't know how we thought we were solving anything in 2013 by creating an ordinance to allow a special event on public property to be governed by an ordinance that deals for anything but public property. But that's what we did. It didn't seem to impress staff that we were affecting the welfare of 300 people. It didn't seem to impress staff that we were giving away the most expensive piece of real estate in the city for $159 a year or for season. It didn't seem to impress them that the voters have a vision of health of arts and culture. It didn't seem to impress them that this was simply a retail event. And it's, many, many speakers have said, and I would reiterate, I don't think any of us have any problem with the retail event. If this retail event went into Marshall Way and rented some of the vacant storefronts, or went into Main Street and rented some of the vacant storefronts and did what other merchants in this area are doing, we would not be discussing this business tonight. We would not be having this discussion. It is only because we've gone through the contortion of calling it a special event. And now, after all of this, we're told that we can't rescind the petition. I have a great deal of problems accepting that as a solution or as a, as a belief. I can't believe the seven of us were elected up here to represent the interests of citizens. And when it comes to something like this, when we have a great number of our citizens who are crying out and saying, our welfare is being impacted, please help, and we've been saying this for three years, that we do not have the power to rescind. I guess I'm, I'm, I'm moved to rescind this because I don't think it was allowed by the ordinance, and I don't care what we say about the 2013 right-of-way ordinance allowing this. The right-of-way ordinance obviously put it back to the special event ordinance on private property only, and all the provisions there are for private property. All the provisions of what's allowed, pumpkin sales, tent sales, sidewalk sales, everything is related to private property. Number two, I don't think this is a special event, but we've never bothered to define that. We're gonna define that term, but this is neither special nor an event. It is a unique and creative retailing venture. And the proponents and the participants are to be applauded for the retail ingenuity that they've shown. But unfortunately, you can't do that using public assets. You can't use public property for that purpose. I think it was, I think the health, the public health and the public welfare were discarded and ignored. I don't think the special events committee knew that they were supposed to look at public welfare. They thought they were supposed to look at traffic, police impacts, trash on the street. But the ordinance requires that we look at the impact on public health and welfare. And as I understand the term, it is relevant. I think the granting, the privilege of serving, of setting up business on the bridge, that some people said we spent $9 million to build a bridge, and now, and the only vehicles allowed to cross the bridge are trolleys, but when this event is going on, the trolley doesn't even cross the bridge. I don't know why you catch the trolley, or where it goes, or where it takes you. Pedestrians, if they want to cross the bridge, have to walk through the business center of the artisans. So I think, I think I've expressed my frustration. Of all the solutions that I've been given up there, I really don't like the three choices that I've been given. My preference, and I will join whatever council members choose to feel the same, would be to rescind the contract. I certainly would instruct staff, if they have any ambiguity about where this council is coming from, that they should not be granting the 2006 requested dates for this event. But even for those that are immediately, to be honest, if we cannot sufficiently curtail them so that they have no adverse impact on the health and welfare of others in the community, I would rescind those as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm sorry, did I, did I hear you say a motion at the, earlier on in that?
Well, I hesitated making, I'd be happy to make a motion right now.
No, I just didn't know whether you had made one or not, and then, then you sort of...
I was giving people the courtesy of responding before we had anybody make a motion.
That's fine, that's fine then. Certainly, Councilwoman Clapp?
Well, I won't go over all the, the many points that Councilman Smith made. If I had my preference, I would rescind this contract also, but I'm told I can't do that. So it seems to me that what I would want to do, and I'm not making a motion at this moment, I'm just wanting to kind of build on to the comments that were made by Councilman Smith, and that would be, I would like for the city manager to take a look at this and to consider the strong feelings of a number of councilmen about this issue. And that we are concerned that, we are not talking about two businesses that are on private property that are in opposition to each other. We're talking about a hundreds of businesses who are on private property versus one business that's occupying public property with a permit that's been given by the city, but yet, that permit and that event is affecting the welfare of the other 200-plus businesses. So it would seem to me that there is something that can be looked at here by the city manager in conjunction perhaps with the special events committee. If we are not in a position to actually rescind the contract, then I would like to at least consider directing you to take a look at something like this. And that would be, I guess, option number one. And in specific, if we can't rescind the contract, there are two pretty major issues that are involved here that I think need to be reviewed right away. And that is that this event is on Thursday night, the same night as art walk. And secondly, that the event is occupying the bridge, so that pedestrians and trolleys really can't use the bridge on those days when it's occupying it. So that seems to be something that could be considered and changed right away if there is not a way to rescind the actual permit. Those things, I think, are the most concerned from, from my perspective. The length of the, of the entire event is also a problem. We do have at least some latitude here in that this contract only goes through the end of December. So what we do now with this current permit versus what we do in January are two different things. So I suppose I could make a motion that would be that I'd like to direct the city manager to review the permit and discuss what kind of changes can be made, or whether or not it can be entirely rescinded, and bring that, that review and discussion back to the council as soon as possible because there still needs to be a decision made about the permit in January. And that's not going to be determined by the special events ordinance because that's not going to be completed until after the first of the year. So some, some, some sense of what can be done needs to be brought back to the council so that we can weigh that in order to make a determination about what we want to do with the January permit, beginning in January. So that's probably a very rambling motion, and I'm not sure if it, if it totally made sense. So if you want me to restate it, I'd be happy to do that. But I suppose, first of all, if anybody understood what I said and they want to second it, that's fine too.
I think, well, if you're asking me, and I saw you look this direction, I would just re, I'd say that I, I heard a motion there, but there was some elements of it that I think cross over into an area that first said we can't do it, but then consider rescinding of it. And I don't know if that's a directive or for consideration.
Well, I mean, I obviously could say, we can direct the city manager to review the permit, but what do we want him to review would be a question that would be posed to the rest of the councilmen. In my estimation, we review whether there's a possibility of rescinding the contract. If there isn't a possibility, then we take a look at what kind of changes could be made in the current, in the current permit that would move the event from Thursday night and would also remove the event from the bridge. Those would be the two issues that I think are most concerned in this contract, and I'd like to get answers to that, to come back to this council, for us to consider what kind of, what kind of action we would want to take related to the, the actual permit that has not been given, starting in January.
I'll second that, whatever it was.
So would you like to speak toward that second?
Well, it, I will second the, the motion. I think, and the essence of the motion is that we are giving the city manager direction of what I hope he can hear as the, the sense of council, and then you'll hear the rest of it, I suppose. But, and you know, from my two cents, that, you know, my recommendation is that you revoke the contract. Everything you said throws you back to the special event provision, which I don't think applies, but if you think it does, as you know, point, section 7.927 permits revocation of a permit. And it can be revoked for any one of three reasons, the third of which... For any one of three reasons, the third of which is if the event poses a threat to public, health, safety, or welfare. And I would urge you to look at that provision for revocation, look at what you're hearing from this council and from 300 businesses. And, you know, if I can't tell you what to do, I can certainly urge you what to do. But that's why I support the motion.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilman Phillips?
Thank you, Mayor. So, Mr. Stockwell, you mentioned at the beginning that council has no authority to rescind this permit?
Looking back on my notes to see exactly what I said. What I was trying to repeat was information from the council report, and what I said is, is that staff's analysis is that the city council cannot direct the committee to revoke or rescind the permit, but can ask the city manager to look into the validity, validity of a particular permit, but it cannot revoke the permit directly, and it cannot direct staff to revoke it.
So can I ask a city attorney if that is correct? And if so, why didn't we not have that authority?
The ordinance adopted by council establishes the administrative procedures for the issuance and revocation of permits, and does not include a provision that allows the council to implement a revocation. I would point out, for example, that the ordinance adopted by council states that any revocation is reviewed by the zoning administrator, and the zoning administrator's determination is final. And it would be a very unusual procedure to have council revoke a permit and then have the zoning administrator review it, review the revocation and overrule the council. It's, the ordinance approved by council was not set up for council to act on the permits. So there is no authority in the ordinance for the council to take that action.
Okay, so by default, there's no authority for the council to take that action because it wasn't put into the ordinance. But it's the same thing, then it also doesn't say that the council can't do it, just as much as it says that they can do it.
No, they, I think a fair reading of the ordinance is that the zoning administrator has the responsibility for administering the ordinance, and there's no reference in there to the council having that responsibility. And just as a general rule, once the council's adopted an ordinance that establishes procedures, it's the, unless there's some specific role for the council in those procedures, then that's the end of the council's responsibility. So I would, I, but my, I think, fair reading of the ordinance, in my interpretation, the ordinance is that it does not provide authority for the council to revoke permits.
Okay, well, if we can't revoke the permit, then it's pretty much because the special events committee authority over the council. And I can't see where a past council would have allowed that. Probably didn't think about it at the time. But now that something has come up, or now it has come to the council, and now we do have to think about it, I think we should have the authority to do it. And I wish somebody would have made that motion. You know, the original council approval, I believe, when they made this ordinance, they were thinking of fun and exciting events throughout the year. I don't think they were thinking about one event that's, that's gonna impose the entire season. When it's two nights a week for the entire season, it's not an event anymore, it's a business. And I think that's misrepresentation. I think misrepresentation during the permit process is enough to revoke it right there. And I'd like to ask Mr. Stockwell also, did staff, they talked about the complaints from 2012 to 2015, possibly 200 to 300 complaints. Is that correct? Did staff receive all those complaints?
The prior petitions in 2012 and 2014 were given directly to the special events committee. So the special events committee did review those and was aware of those when it had approved and considered those permits in prior years. And yes, it's also my understanding that the current committee, the composition of that is very much the same as had been, you know, when the, the prior permits were approved, were aware of those prior petitions as well. You stated numbers of petitioners on that, and my recollection of the numbers that you stated were not the same as the numbers that were presented when Mr. Pejman put the information up on the screen earlier. And so I just wanted to, you know, clarify that I'm not, you know, I'm clarifying that one point, but not confirming the second part of that.
Okay, so, you know, one gentleman said 300, Mr. Pejman, I believe, said 200. If the special, I'm, what I'm asking, then I guess not staff, but the special events committee, didn't they get that many complaints, and why didn't they act on that? What was their thought process on, oh, we have 200 complaints, well, we'll just brush that aside? I mean, they must have had some kind of thought process.
Yeah, Councilman, I appreciate the opportunity to respond to that to the best of my knowledge. Okay. So my understanding in 2012 and 2014 is those petitions were provided to the special events committee, and the special events committee's has, has a kind of unique challenge under the ordinance that was given them, and that is, is they've got to promote special events while protecting nearby neighborhoods and protecting public health, safety, and welfare, and then there's a few more things beyond there. And so really, the default position of the committee in, in all circumstances at this point is when they hear concerns about an event, they have the applicant work with the people that have those concerns to try to address and mitigate those concerns. My understanding is from the perspective of the committee, they felt that those concerns had been addressed and mitigated in some changes in how the event was structured and done, and those were included in the stipulations. Now, I understand clearly by the comments that were made tonight that people don't agree with that. I understand that. But I'm, the committee, based on the information that they had in front of them at the time, they made that decision. The comment about the 300 people, I don't dispute that either, but that's also clearly that that happened after the event was approved by the special events committee. So I don't think it's fair to fault the special event committee for not knowing the extent to which the additional names and petitions, you know, the, two, three, at least three additional petitions that have come out since that time. So I just want to, you know, clarify that as well. And that's why I think in, in good conscience, I said at the end of my presentation, that if you want to have the city manager, have the city man, the special events committee relook at this with the information that's new since the time the event application was considered, that, you know, it's possible that they, you know, especially with the feedback that are, be given by the council tonight, that they would come to a different conclusion next week than they would have it on August 8th, based on the information in the application they had. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, and that's why I asked that question, so we could get a clarification on the events committee and what their thought process was on it. So, you know, barring that we can't rescind it, you know, I'm, I'm kind of in favor of the number one and number two, review the permit, and I hope the acting city manager has been listening to the concerns of all of our brick and mortar merchants. And, you know, I think in the future, staff, and especially the special events committee, should consider maybe doing a council report on events that might be deemed excessive or controversial, so this doesn't happen again, it doesn't come back to us. But I'll reiterate, we do have concerns, if we're gonna do one and two, about the Thursday night, I would like to see that taken away. Concerns over actually having a show on the bridge itself, concerns over a length of a special event like this. a, a special event like this, you know, what term is a special event? Is it one week, two weeks, or 52 weeks? And also the parking, that, that really has to be addressed too, because if you're, if you're going to lose business because people have nowhere to park, then obviously that's not fair either, so. I said at the last council meeting that if, in the event that push comes to shove, I will stand with the brick and mortar building people, they were here first, they've had a long outstanding business with the city, they pay their taxes, they do their, their job, and I think we need to consider their thoughts, you know, these 100, 200, 300 people that come to work every day and pay their taxes to the city, has to be considered. And I'm sorry, Brian, that this is kind of being thrown in your lap now, but that's the choice we were given, and so that's, that's what I'll be going along with. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. You know, the seven of us up here are actually elected in a constitutional republic form of government, not just a pure democracy, certainly, but at the same time, we're, we're actually hired on, if you will, to legislate, not to just sort of change laws as they suit us or what happens and through the course of things. I really take little exception with some of the concerns that have been expressed. I, I think there's really a significant concern as to how far we drive this, particularly in an arbitrary manner. My, I guess, in my respect for the law and what our job is to legislate, and then frankly, through the city government, execute in compliance with those laws, we are, we're vested with that. And as our agent, staff, starting with our executive team of charter officers, are given that assignment, they're not there to make policy, they're not to change or to pay, play favorites or to go against somebody. As mentioned to me in this morning's meeting with some of the gallery owners, that they believe there's a conspiracy that we're targeting the galleries. And I said, well, I backed and said, okay, that's not really true, but it's, it's a perception. I said, well, I don't know where that perception comes from, but that's ludicrous. But this, the, the tenor of this discussion has been raised to such a level that we've lost perspective on the overall, I believe. And I think that certainly there are things that are not executed exactly perfectly. There is, in a municipal government, as, as high and as, as great a city government and city staff as I think we have, and frankly, a council, none of us execute on these things absolutely perfectly. And frankly, it doesn't always, you know, match up with exactly what each side might feel in a matter. That's the job we've got. But our job is to legislate, and I think it was Mr. Thompson who mentioned this earlier on, that somehow or other, our job to legislate, as it was brought to us a month or two ago now, to consider something we just passed tonight, a resolution to start an ordinance, to open up the ordinance to, for consideration and outreach in that. As we started that up, boom, some of the, you know, the feelings pent up, maybe even some of the disregard has been exhibited by, maybe misguided, going to, to staff in some instances. Staff is not there to create law or policy, they're not. They're there to just execute on the basis of what we legislate here. And so, it may have been misguided in some of the, the previous complaints, even to the Events Committee, or at least to the, the extent that they, it was. But what I would say is, we, we might as well just forget to try to legislate any new ordinance, even though I may feel that it would be good to define it a bit better. It would be good to, to maybe charge for services and power and other things to events. Maybe that's appropriate, maybe those things, maybe even considering certainly the conflict, even though, as I mentioned to the group this morning, I find that problematic. Who's going to be defining exactly what works and what doesn't work, who's in conflict, who's not? And not that maybe the staff could come up with a magic formula, but I'd be very concerned about even the arbitrary nature of that. But I think right now, we're faced with, we might as well not change the ordinance, we might as well just make it up as we go along. And I think that's, that's a problem. That'll be a problem for everybody, when you lose that in sight of the law. So, I'm not for, and even though I think it's a valiant effort to try to find some middle ground, what I would suggest, and I'll maybe even make it as a, as a motion, I do think we ask the city manager to review the permit, not with an eye toward rescinding it, but with working something out here, to take a good look at this and see if we can't apply what we're trying to get to, maybe with some consideration, get to a mid, a, a middle ground, I'm not sure if I want to find it that way, nevertheless, to find something that the city can say, hey, if we do this, what do we do going, what, what can we do going forward in our considerations? Now, I'm talking about artisan markets specifically, for the second half of this deal. I think if we come together a little bit more on this, we could probably find a good answer, and I think something that would really address the preponderance of problems without not going overboard, not eliminating something that this council and the consultants we've hired, and the CV, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, our tourist people, all tell us, activate your downtown. I've been around here long enough now, that we've been working on activating the downtown for a long time, and whether it's by fool or folly, we somehow maybe stepped on somebody's toes when we said, hey, you know what, it'd be great to bring events downtown. Most of our compadre, if you will, municipalities do that and find that to be a good thing. Now, maybe there's some magic formula that we can work out and make it better, but I think we've gone a long ways, and it's frustrated everybody, and I'd even admit, including myself. But what I would suggest is that we do, ask the city manager, and I'll, I'll pose this as an alternative motion, ask the city manager to review the permit, work with the applicant to find where we can be that will find and address some of the concerns, and this does incorporate number two as well. Consider right now, what are some of the concerns that we can work with the applicant and be able to move forward, even before we legislate and fix and create a better ordinance for ourselves? But jumping all over the place with all kinds of stories and all kinds of accusations and that isn't doing anybody any good, we're just getting everybody irritated. So, that's an alternative motion, I think it would be a, a good one, but I'm not, I, personally, and if they can turn it down as far as this is concerned, I'm going to say I'm, I do respect the law, I do respect people who have probably counted on the law and with the permit, which is a license, which is a contract, and I, I don't know what would happen or what the exposure is to the city, but I don't really care as far as that's concerned. I'm more concerned about it being an honorable city when we contract with something or other, and we have a law and we follow it, and don't arbitrarily say, ah, you know what, we don't like you, or we don't like what you're doing, even though it's compliant with everything we've done for years, and we're, we're rescinding it. I'm not, I'm not for that. So, that's not the, the direction I think we should go, but I do think we can work out some of the particulars of this. So, my motion would be to have the city manager or his staff, whoever he delegates, to work with the permitee, if you will, and, or the licensee, and see what we can do to work out and get the groups together to see if we can't work something out, if we somehow can mediate this to some better place. Now, that, you talk about a, a motion, that may be a little elongated, but that's essentially what I, what I mean.
So, you're looking at mediation?
Mediation and look at the permit and, and work with the parties to see if we can't find ourselves in a good place, and at least some addressing some of the concerns, and then look toward the, the next one. And frankly, work on an ordinance that I think does all the things that I think we all have a bit of interest in, it, but we may be on different levels, but nevertheless, we can find ourselves someplace, and that is timing, booking, potential conflict, duration, definition, those things, I think that there, we can get some reasonable criteria established where we can live with, and frankly, expect, which is not an easy task all the time, expect staff to be able to enforce and build on.
Are you putting a time frame on that?
Well, that's an interesting, the question was just posed by Councilwoman Clapp, is if I'm putting a timeframe on that. And I know timing is a big issue, as we've talked about it tonight, particularly as it relates to the secondary issue. But I think we can, we can probably allow ourselves some time, and when I say that, I mean, if we can work something out, and I'm going to say within the next, certainly within the next month, if we can work something out with the parties, we should be able to carry it forward, but at the same time, continue to work on the elements we talked about as far as the ordinance itself is concerned, we've already established, which this meeting is not about. But in any case, that, that's my motion. Well, yes, Councilwoman?
I just want to speak to that because I, I think you're saying a lot of what I said. I said that, and I, you know, I, the implication is, is that some of us up, up here may not respect the law, and I do respect the law, that's why I said that I, my preference would be that we could rescind this, but we're being told we can't, so that was why I said the city manager should review the permit. And I'm more than willing to agree that, that by doing that, he would work with the, the present permit holder to look at the areas of greatest concern, and I mentioned to specifically Thursday nights and the bridge. So, if we directed the city manager to review the permit with the understanding that he is going to be working with the, with the current holder of the permit to see what can be done to change the Thursday night issue and the bridge problem, I would probably second your motion, because that's pretty much what I said.
Well, the only thing-
And, and also, I had said, let's make it in a couple of weeks, because we have this time problem of there is another potential permit that's going to be requested beginning in January, and we have to make a decision early enough for that person to-
The more we get into the particulars, and maybe this is where my departure is-
Well, I think, I think he needs to know what we're asking him to look at.
Well, I think that, I think in general, we need to leave that scope of things open somewhat, otherwise, we're going to end up collapsing in. We just, I think they're in a position to be able to do it, but one of the, on the second side, still was talking about rescinding, and that's, that's where the, the major departure that I felt was in it. But I'm, you know, I, I, maybe there's a lot of the same things there, but I, I still go with the separation, and, and I'll consider that an alternative motion.
Motion fails for lack of a second. Councilwoman Littlefield?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, this has obviously been festering under the covers of a lot of people for many years, and nothing has been done about it until it's blown up in everybody's face in a big bang. You know, I'll get right to the point. I think the martis, the artisan market special event permit needs to be revoked, and I need, I believe that for the following reasons. First, it is a gift to a private, for-profit entity, which is prohibited by both the Arizona State Constitution and the city charter. This staff conclusion that giving artisan markets the use of prime public property twice a week for seven months for a mere $246 is not a gift, is an insult. It's an insult to everyone of intelligence who looks at the details of this permit. I went to the websites of several of our neighboring cities and found that they, what they would charge thousands of dollars for this kind of prime property for this length of time. This idea that it's not a gift is ridiculous. I'm sorry, it's also not true. But even if you somehow believe in some alternate reality somewhere, that this is not a gift, the artisan market special event permit still should be rescinded because of the very words in our zoning ordinance, "The event poses a threat to public health, safety, and welfare." We have had almost 300 businesses over the last few years come to the city and tell us that, and they have been ignored. It poses a threat in two ways. It cheats the taxpayers out of tens of thousands of dollars that the city should be receiving over the years if we charged a reasonable market price fee for the use of our prime public property. What message does this send to our voters when we're asking them to increase our property taxes to pay for vital city services, and yet, at the same time, we're throwing money away as a special interest gift? It also, number two, hurts Scottsdale's economy by unfairly favoring one business over others, in this case, the galleries and the Fifth Avenue merchants. The numerous petitions the city has received and ignored over the years from the galleries and these merchants, plus the recent loss of Trailside Galleries, Overland Gallery, and Biltmore Gallery, some of our star businesses in the arts market, many others included, prove this point. They were all closed or moved, and they were a part of Scottsdale's cachet and reputation as an arts mecca. We shouldn't have lost those galleries, and we certainly can't afford to lose any more. So, I believe they are, we are in violation of state and city gift laws, but also in violation of our own special events ordinances and zoning ordinances. I've been told we cannot rescind this, this permit. Very well, I will choose number one as the next best thing, and I have some very specific things to suggest. I find it very interesting that Mr. Stockwell mentioned as concerns in his office and on his commission, the very things that the markets have been talking about, the galleries, the Fifth Avenue, all of these, the same issues, and I would ask the city manager to consider these, take these into consideration, the number of opposition businesses that are saying they are being hurt by this permit, the petitions and the requests that have been ignored over the years. The bridge itself is not open. Many of the times, when this market is, is in force, we can't cross the bridge with our trolleys, we can't use it as was originally designed. The parking concerns, I've heard these repeated over and over and over again, nothing but being made worse by having people come and park all day long in the spots in front of the galleries, so their customers can't get through. This hurts them. Eliminate the art walk competition. This is something that, the timing of which is horrendous. I have no objection for people having other night businesses going on, that's fine, but in direct competition to something that the art galleries have put together for 40 years and advertised and maintained and kept strong at a great deal of personal expense and business expense, this is wrong, and I think it should be stopped. Also, I would like you to take into consideration the statement that was made here tonight about the falsifying of the permanent, of the permit application. Said they were never on the Merchant Association agenda, these people, they were not vetted by the members, and it was a misrepresentation that they all supported this. I think that's important. Also, the fact that it is monopoly, Sundays, no parking, customers can't find parking, shows a threat onto the welfare, this is part of our ordinance. We have not listened to any of these businesses for the past years since 2012. I think it's time we changed our attitude and brought them in to this discussion and be a part of helping us to form a new ordinance that will be legislative in nature and that will come through the council for final discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Milhavin?
I do feel like I'm sitting in an alternate reality. Mr. Stockwell, or someone from staff, if you could help me understand, earlier you said that we do about 250 event permits in the city every year, or those, are those event days, more or less?
No, that's 250 separate permit applications.
Oh, applications, and then how many events does that equate to about, approximately, I'm not going to-
More than 500.
So, 500 events?
More, more than 500, yeah. When it was counted.
Around, okay. And how many of those events would you say sell stuff?
I remember researching that at one point in time, and I think it's, I think it was less- less than 10 of those 250 had vendor sales as the primary focus of the event.
How do you define primary focus? Of the 500 events, how many of the events sell something, whether they have food trucks there, or ball caps, or T-shirts to commemorate the event?
If you're asking about the number of permit applications, the number that sells something as a portion of that, well, it would be much higher because obviously you include all of the extension of premises in the downtown area that are also under special event permit, and those all would have sales of liquor and food in that area. And so many of them, if not all of the event, have some sort of sales component. But a, as we were trying to define a question previously, under, looking at- It would actually be more helpful of me if I could try and find that analysis and give it to you, but-
Okay, so let me all go another way. Approximately, how many of these events do you think are held on city property or on city right-of-way?
Okay, we did do that research. About half of the 250 events are held on city property or city right-of-way.
And then you made a comment that I hadn't thought of until just now, when you talk about extension of premises. So if a restaurant or a merchant leases their sidewalk space to extend their shop or their restaurant, that would not be considered an event, but would be use of city property or city right-of-way?
No, that goes through the same special event process. So if, you know, if a bar in the downtown area is going to extend their premises onto public sidewalk, public alleyways, public parking lot, that would be considered in that number of 250.
And then I know we've approved lease agreements for folks to lease their sidewalks from the city. Is that, does that require an event?
No, those outdoor dining license agreements would not be included in the special events permits.
But in that case, we are renting city right-of-way for business purposes?
Yes, in that case, those are renting them for city business purposes. Those are kind of permanent rentals, whereas the special event permits would be temporary rentals.
Thank you. I'm going to put the city attorney on the spot. Could you explain to us what restraint of trade is?
Usually restraint of trade is, I mean, it's a term that has a lot of different meanings in the law depending on the context, but in general, it means where one or more parties combine to take advantage of something close to monopoly power in order to prohibit other competitors from entering the market.
So the way, the, one of the things I heard you say is trying to limit competition. And when I hear folks stand up and say, shut down this business because I don't want you to let it compete with me, I just, I, it clearly leaves me speechless. The, it is not the business of government to regulate competition or to pick who the winners and losers are. I'm sorry. If the issue is about allowing people to use public rights-of-way or city property, we have lots and lots of businesses that are doing that now. Are we suggesting we want to shut all those down? Because if it's about use of public right-of-way, that might be an argument I would understand more than don't allow somebody to compete with me. Whether the business is on the bridge or in a storefront a few hundred feet away, I don't see how that's material to what the, that business is doing. It's, is, I think our place is, is it a legal use for that property? And I think the answer is, is yes. And so I think that this has huge, far-reaching implications. To the people who stood up today and said, we have 300 people saying, don't issue an event permit, in my mind, that's no different than saying, don't issue a business license. We might call it something different, but we don't have a right to deny somebody a business license because we don't want them to compete with them. And in my mind, this is exactly the same thing. So I'm sorry, we have rules, we have ordinances, we follow the rules and the ordinances. If we don't like the rules, we can go about and change the rules. I think that was the mayor's point. We have to follow the ordinances we have until we change the ordinances. And so I certainly don't see that staff has done anything different than they've been instructed and outlined by the ordinances. So Mayor, when you made your motion, I was sort of inclined to, you know, the, we're moving forward with a process to reconsider all this stuff, and that will move forward. And I thought you were sort of moving in that direction. But if the issue here is whether or not to revoke the permit, certainly not, it's not within our purview, I wouldn't do it anyway, it doesn't seem appropriate. But to ask the city manager to review a permit, the conditions of which would require that the event had happened, right? So it almost, right, the conditions were that she, that they've followed the application that, let me see if I can find it, it's on one of the slides. I had it up here a second ago. Right, that it was conducted according to the way the application was, that there was no, let me find it. Failure to conduct the event as presented on the application, well, you can't review it if it hasn't been done this season yet. Failure to comply with the conditions, again, she couldn't have complied or failed to comply, it hasn't happened. And whether or not it poses a threat to public, again, you're going to review a permit for an event that hasn't happened yet, doesn't make much sense to me. So I, for me, for me, I will move forward with the other discussion around what we want the special event ordinance to look like. I think we put our tourism community in our downtown at huge risk by setting precedent that will impact beyond this one event, and I certainly do not believe in my core and in my soul that it's government's place to limit competition. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Vice Mayor Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to clarify, among other things, a statement that was made by others up here. I think we all have a respect for the law. I mean, I don't think there's some of us that do and some of us that don't. And I would point out, in terms of myself, I have an incredible respect for the law, and it is that respect for the law that leads me to recommend to the city manager that he revoke this contract. Or I should say that he review the permit, but he knows what I mean. The ordinance provides that a permitee or a person seeking a permit, or it should be determined by the zoning administrator if the person must have a permit. And there's a whole section that deals with that. It's called the procedure, 7.925. And it gives the zoning administrator great authority for determining whether a permit will be required, for setting up a committee to determine the compliance with that permit, for evaluating the permit. And in fact, if the little committee that's been set up denies it, the person can come back to the zoning administrator and say, I've been wrongly treated, please overrule this committee. That's all in Section 7.925. A completely separate section, 7.927, talks about the conditions under which a permit can be revoked. And it doesn't say the zoning administrator provokes, revokes the agreement. It says, these are the conditions under which a zoning event permit can be revoked. And it is because of that provision that I continue to believe that we, as a group of seven, have the authority to revoke this permit. It does not say the zoning administrator can do it. It just says it may be revoked for any of the following reasons. And Councilwoman Millhaven read all those reasons to you, and she kind of went quickly over number three because number three doesn't talk about past tense. It talks about both present, past, and future. It says, if the event poses a threat. And I think that's the whole point that people have been making tonight. This event, because of its past performance, because of its operation, because of what we may certainly expect next year, because it'll be the same as it's been for the past five years, it will continue to pose a threat to public health, safety, or welfare. It is my reliance on that provision and the authority in there that I continue to believe we do have the authority to revoke this permit. I have the ultimate respect for the law. We wrote the law. We published the law, and the law says that any event which poses a threat to public health, safety, and welfare shall be revoked. I am relying on the written word, not on the actions of staff, not on their interpretations. I'm writing on what we and previous councils wrote as the law. And staff are indeed our agents, and it is for that reason I expect them to follow our directive. The other comment before I relinquish the microphone here, Mr. Stockwell answered the question correctly, and when he said, you know, of the 500 events, only 10 have sales as their focus. That's what we're talking about here, folks. It's not a question of whether an event is going to be held and sell hot dogs and hamburgers and soda pop at the same time. It is whether the event itself is a retail endeavor. I don't think we are arguing that this is an art show. We're arguing only that it's a retail event. People come there to sell their wares. And I said before, I'll say again, if they were located in a private building or on public, or on private land, we probably wouldn't be having this discussion. There's no restraint of trade here. We're not even talking about restraining trade. We're talking about the government not creating arbitrarily a competitive advantage for one business over another. If we would just stay out of it, I think this problem would solve itself. But we haven't stayed out of it, and so I'm proposing we do. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, Councilwoman Clapp?
I find it is interesting that we keep intermingling the word event and business. Councilwoman Millhaven referred to artisan market as a business. It is a business. It's not an event. So it's asking for a special event permit to run a business, a retail business, on private property, on public property. And that is a real concern of mine, that if we are allowing a business to operate for a long period of time, and you mentioned the number of events that sell items at retail, how many of them operate for two months out of the year, the equivalent of two months out of the year? Probably artisan market is it. That's it. It is a business operating on the public's property, calling itself a special event, going through the special event committee in order to run its business. And that's where I believe many of us are taking issue. It is not a special event. It is a business. And because of that, it has to be looked at differently. It has to be looked at from the perspective of what kind of impact this business is having on the other businesses in the area that actually operate as businesses, that don't operate under a special permit. They have business licenses, and they have actual physical locations, and they actually pay property taxes, and they do all the things that most businesses do. This is a, this is a new entity in Scottsdale that is causing many people a lot of angst because of the length of it primarily. If this was a three-day art fair like we have in the city, in the mall, that's different. That's just an art show. It's an art fair. It's not a business. It sells retail items. It sells art items. And I know that the gallery owners and the business owners in the area don't have a problem with that. And I know some people that I've heard from are concerned that we're after the food trucks and we're after the farmer's markets and the other types of businesses or operations that are in the downtown area. I don't believe I am, and I don't believe the gallery owners are, and I don't believe the Fifth Avenue merchants are, or the Brown Street merchants, or the people on First Street, or the people on Second Street, or the people on Marshall Way or in Craftsman Court. All those people are concerned about their businesses because what's happening at Artisan Market impacts every one of those businesses. The food trucks and the, and the farmer's markets do not. We're not hearing from grocery stores about farmer's markets. We're not hearing from the restaurants about food trucks. If we were, then we'd probably be considering what kind of impact it has, but it doesn't. It doesn't seem to be impacting them, but many, many businesses are telling us, the equivalent of 200 or whatever the number is, that enough is enough, and that they are tired of constantly asking for action, no action to be taken because we've turned a blind eye to the fact that there, we've created a real unfair competition situation by allowing a business to operate on the public's land. And so if that business, as was mentioned by Councilwoman, or Vice Mayor Smith, is, would move to private property, probably nobody would have any problem with this, but it's on public property. That's why it's our concern. That's why we need to do something about this. That's why we need to have the city manager take a look at this, see what can be done, take a look at any action that can be taken, because right now, the permit is through the end of the year, but the beginning of the year, there is no permit. And so then we're going to be asked again what should be done. And so I think we need to bring this back as soon as possible so we can find out what his recommendations are, so that we can determine how we're going to act on the January through the rest of the season permit that's coming. So that's the concern I have about this, and I don't think it's inappropriate to be asking the city manager to do what we've asked him to do because we have, we have gotten inundated with emails, phone calls, all kinds of information from people about this, and we can't just sit here and ignore it. We have to act. And I'm hoping that we'll get some good information when this comes back from the city manager.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Millhaven?
I will concede, I will concede that all events are businesses. And I think the question is whether or not we're going to allow anybody to use public right-of-way for a purpose other than walking and driving. I think that's the question, yes or no? And if the answer is yes, then it's a question of how much do we charge them to use that space? To pick what you can sell or not sell, whether it's food or art, is, in my mind, restraint of trade. You're limiting competition arbitrarily. I would suggest that if the bridge is such a great place to sell your stuff, for $159, you too could sell your stuff on the bridge. Well, you know what? Then let's figure out what we do. If we have more than one person who wants to use that space, let's figure out, how do we do that? Do we do a lottery system to figure out? Let me ask, how many, how many people have been turned away because they made an application and the space was already booked?
No one has been turned away because the space was already booked. In fact, there's a stipulation in the permit that requires the permitee to find another location if somebody else wants to use that space.
Thank you. So we should be so lucky to have more people to want to use that space. And while we don't have food, we don't have restaurants objecting to food trucks yet, I think by letting one industry say, you can't let somebody compete with me, we're inviting everybody else in town, to restrict anybody else from doing exactly what they do, which again, is not government's place.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Phillips?
Well, thank you, Mayor. While everybody was talking, I was thinking about this. You know what? It came to mind that I think last year, maybe the year before, I think it was last year, Glendale revoked the Coyotes contract, and everybody was up in arms. And how could they do such a thing? Did they have the authority to do such a thing? The Glendale City Council and the Coyotes contract. Well, we all found out the reason they did it is so they could rewrite a new one that worked for everybody. So I'm going to see what happens here. I'm going to make an alternate motion to rescind the Artisan Market special event permit for the same reason, so that we can rewrite the new one.
Motion's been made and seconded with a second. I'd like to speak toward it.
I think I've probably said enough, but I, I do feel like we should have the authority, and that we have, feel like we have the authority on the ordinance to do so, so I do support the motion.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilwoman Littlefield?
Mr. Washburn, can I have your opinion?
I'm sorry, are you asking my opinion on the, on the motion?
Yes.
Yeah, my opinion is that the council doesn't have the legal authority to revoke the permit.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. See, there's no further comment on this. I guess I may make a comment. I certainly, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Littlefield, did you want to speak further? Yeah?
I'd like to say one other thing. I won't go against the city attorney's opinion, legal opinion on this. However, I would suggest to the- However, I would suggest to the city manager and to the acting city manager to hustle this along and put it on a real fast track, that we need to make decisions, we need to have this brought before us again as soon as possible to work on the ordinance and to make sure that the laws are in place for the coming year. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. My comment goes a little bit to the motion, it's, the alternative motion that's on the table, and back to the original motion. I was of the impression that Councilwoman Clapp's motion included, by direction from the Vice Mayor, that it would include a prospect for rescinding. And I thought that was accepted at that point in time by the second and then, and thus by the motion maker. But I will say that I'm diametrically opposed to just an overt rescinding, for, not only for legal purposes, I think it's a matter of our standing in, in, in the world as far as a city that operates within the law and frankly respects the law and its execution equally and consistently with everyone. So, I've got, there's, there's no way I'll support the alternative motion. Councilwoman?
The motion that we all were considering, what I said was, if I can remember that far back, was that it would be my preference that we could rescind this, but I am following the attorney's advice that we can't. So, then I asked the city attorney to do other things to take a look at the permit other than rescinding, and come back to us within a, about a two-week period in order to get an answer from him about what can be done with this permit, and specifically mentioning a couple of items that should be looked at. But I didn't propose rescinding because I don't think we can do that. That's why I will not also support the motion of the second.
Nick, if I might, just to respond to that, and I appreciate the clarification on your side, but what happened with the second is it got further defined and included rescinding. And of course, it's represented now by the motion that's on the table in that area, too. So, I, if it does not include, and now if our legal advice stands, and of course, it stands also then for the city manager, that rescinding is not on the table in the original motion.
Could I address that, Your Honor?
Please, if you would.
Yeah, the council can't revoke the permit. The staff can go through the review process and look at the conditions that have been discussed here and make a determination on whether or not the permit should be revoked.
I see. I was personally looking for sort of just a straightforward, honest dialogue with the parties so that we could figure out a direction to go, not with the, not with the idea of, of the city manager rescinding it. So, I will not support the motion, the, the original motion. Councilwoman Littlefield?
Yeah, with that being the case, I will support the original motion, and I would direct that that happen as, as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have to first, obviously, yeah. Councilman Phillips?
Well, it's obvious the staff has more power than the city council, so not to waste the time, and it's obvious the rest of the council's not going to go along with it. So, I'll take back that alternate motion so we can continue with the original motion.
All right, so the alternate motion has been withdrawn. City manager?
Yes, Mayor. Just like a clarification, is the intent of the motion that I come back and report to council, or that I act? So, I, I just need some clarification if it's report or?
I believe, I believe my, my intention is, and I think that's what I'm hearing from Councilwoman Littlefield also, is that I would like a report back at a, at a council meeting within, say, two weeks, because we also are dealing with the situation of another potential permit coming on January 1st, and we need to deal with that. So, I would like to have a report back to the council as soon as possible, in two weeks, hopefully.
And rescinding?
No.
Sorry, Mayor, just a consultation there.
That's all right.
I think we're straight. So, thank you for your time.
And do you feel that, that two weeks is enough sufficient time that you can come back and report to the council?
Mayor, Councilwoman Clapp, I, I don't know, as in the schedules of everything, that, that two weeks is possible, but I certainly got the message to hustle.
Okay.
I have that. Whether two weeks is, it's difficult with current schedules. As you know, I'll be out of town next week, so there's some things that are a little difficult with current schedules.
Okay. As soon as you can.
Yes, ma'am.
If I might, Mr., Brian, if I could, this does include an assessment by you whether you have the standing to rescind this, without exception, without modification, just to rescind it.
I wasn't clear on that, if I'm going to rescind it. I was clear, I was going to relook at it, give you the, give you a review of that permit as it went through in view of the, the facts as they exist today and what we know today, whether or not that is a valid permit, and then to give you my recommendations on where to go forward there. The city term says that if I find that it should be revoked, that should be the finding. It's not a council matter according to the, according to the ordinance as written. So, if the review says it should be revoked, while I report back, it shouldn't, as, as the city attorney says, it shouldn't, that should be the ruling right there, and I'll defer to the city attorney for further clarification.
So, it would be your revocation, not anything this council's done?
That's, Mayor, that's correct.
Okay.
Just, just to clarify, the revocation would be done, including considering whether to revoke, would be done in accordance with the existing ordinance. So, just like it's not a council decision tonight on whether or not to revoke, it wouldn't be a council decision on whether or not to revoke after staff has done the review it's provided for in the ordinance.
So, essentially, what we're saying here with this motion is, it's in your court?
Yep.
I think that, Mayor, you're, that's my understanding, that it's in my court. I need to report back, but the actual action, if there is an action to revoke, is in staff's court.
Well, I think that's a great result. No, I'm just, but in any case, okay. Councilwoman Littlefield?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to reiterate with what Mr. Washburn's latest comment was on that, that that be considered in your review of the permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Vice Mayor?
Well, I was only getting excited because I thought we had some power there for a moment, but turns out we don't. One thing I, that I do want to clarify, at least in my instructions to you and what's embedded in the motion, is to work with all parties, and comments have been made earlier tonight, you know, work with the licensee and see what can be, you know, what we can work out. And I get the impression you all have tried to do that over the past few years, but there are far more interested parties and affected parties by this than just the licensee. And I don't know whether you can do it in two weeks' time, or three, or whatever it takes, but my instructions to you would be work with all affected parties. And that's going to keep you busy, but that's what you have to do. That's the only way you're going to figure out whether the welfare has been impacted. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Well, I guess there's just a final word on it. It's in your court with considerations for everything that's been said here with regard to trying to work with all parties as to whether or not there is grounds to either revoke, or to modify, or to move forward, doing that as quickly as possible. That reasonable summary of it? Okay, I think then, unless there's any further comment, I think we're ready then for a vote. All those in favor, please indicate in favor with a "aye," those opposed with a "nay." Motion passes four to two with Councilwoman Millhaven and myself opposing. Thank you, everybody, for your input and testimony and staff for the presentation and patience. Thank you.
Now, based on the way that was stated, you could have voted for it.
Probably. Okay. All right, so there is no further public comment then. We're not in receipt of any citizens' petitions and mayor council items. I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Moved and seconded, we are adjourned. Thank you.